Alright everyone, good evening. Welcome to the 2020 Maple Lake Candidate Forum. Thank you all for being here. I am Nick Lenny, a member of Maple Lake Messenger staff, and on behalf of the Messenger, thank you very much for attending this event. I'd also like to extend special thanks to Maple Lake City Administrator Sabrina Hilli and to our moderator for this evening, former Maple Lake Mayor, Mike Messina. This year, we have three candidates vying for two city council seats. Brian Fondulia and John Hack and right in Wayne Pomin. In the mayoral race incumbent Todd Burrell is running unopposed. We will divide this evening's forum into two parts, hearing first from the candidates running for the city council and then from the mayoral candidate. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and give us a short bio, two minutes to answer each question from Mr. Messina, which I will be timing. I'll give you a hand signal, something like that. And uh... And each question from Mr. Messina and an important and an opportunity for one-minute rebuttal if necessary. If any candidate is approaching the specific specified time limit, I will signal when there are fifteen seconds remaining. When all questions are asked and answered, we will open the floor to questions from the audience.
They got broken already.
And thank you again for attending this evening.
It's a cream?
It's online.
Mike?
I think we noticed it. Keep on that over there.
We'll wait just a minute while they're adjusting everyone's microphone.
Well, you don't even have a mic. It's laying on the floor.
Is this supposed to have a windscreen?
No, some of them don't have them.
Okay.
Is that comfortable for you? That's just fine. Everyone's all set?
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening, everyone. And again, thank you for inviting me to tonight's candidate forum, 2020, for the Maple Lake City Council and mayoral candidates. As Nick said, I'm Mike Messina and I've been a resident of Maple Lake since nineteen eighty-four and I did serve several terms as mayor of this fine city. With that being said, I think we're just gonna kind of roll right into things. I do have one change that I am going to make and that is, since Todd is running unopposed, I am going to kind of include Todd on some of these questions. And what I'll do, Todd, is I'll just look at you and I'll ask you specifically. Otherwise, we would be asking the three city council candidates questions and then you and I would end up just having a dialogue all by ourselves and those of us here and watching on TV. So with that being said, let's take a minute or two to introduce ourselves, gives us a little background information and we'll go from there. John Hack?
Well, thank you for hosting the event tonight to the Maple Lake Messenger. It's a real service that they do this. My name is John Hack. I've been a resident of Maple Lake since, I guess, going way back to nineteen seventy and I'm a retired teacher. I've been around quite a while. I do have the flea market and I also have the museum. Flea market is up and running, but the museum, we had a lot of roof problems and a lot of other problems, so it's kind of a work in progress. As far as my interest in the position of city council, I was on the city council back seventy-six to seventy-nine and at that time, it was a lot different. Maple Lake was a lot different. I remember going out campaigning and it was small compared to the way it is now. We used to meet, or the council originally met under the water tower, in the old water tower facility. It was kind of a warehouse, I guess, as I recall. And Mayor Mooney was the mayor at the time and it was a new experience for me. In that election, they were talking about blacktopping the runway for the airport. I was really opposed to that. It got my attention. I didn't think it should be on the taxpayers' dime and that was a big issue in the campaign that I promoted, was to not have that be on the taxpayers'. And I won that election and I served four years and it was really a worthwhile experience. So twenty-five years later, I'm back at it again. I'd like to serve again and I got a call actually before the deadline ended, that nobody had filed for the position and I thought, well, it's a good opportunity to do it. So I went up and filed and here we are today, so.
John, for those of you who may not know you, do you have children, your family?
Yep, I have two boys. They graduated from Maple Lake Public Schools, high school. TJ Thomas Jeffre was born in seventy-six and John Paul was born in seventy-seven.
Very good. Thank you, John. Brian, it's all yours.
Oh, thank you. My name is Brian Fondulia. I have four children and a wife. We've lived in the town for two years. It's a very nice community. I like it here. We plan on staying for quite a while. I've got a twenty-one-year-old son and then three girls from ten to two. We've got two girls in the Maple Lake school system. I don't have a lot to say about myself. I've owned a business, I worked in casino business for a long time. Now I basically stay at home with the girls and I work part-time at night.
Thank you, Brian. Wayne?
My name is Wayne Pomin and I've been, I was born and raised here in Maple Lake, the community itself and, you know, seventy years into the community and in nineteen ninety-one, I married my wife Susan and she had a small farm on the edge of Maple Lake and we have four children between the two of us and ten grandchildren and that's about it for me.
Are you retired, Wayne?
I am retired, but I also, I shoe horses and I work, like today, I went out and helped some friends that they're taking out their crops and spent all day on the farm, so.
Very good. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Todd?
I was born and raised here, so fifty-five years of my life, I've lived in Maple Lake. I married my wife Elizabeth thirty-one years ago. We have four adult children. Three of them are married, all four reside, all four of our children reside in the city limits. We have two grandchildren that came this year, so that was exciting. I've spent thirty-one years on the fire department, nineteen of those years I served as fire chief and when I retired from the fire department, I ran for mayor. Here I am.
Very good, Todd. A real pressing question, Todd, is are those four children finally off your payroll?
Yes.
There then. You've done a successful job.
Three of them own houses and one is closing on a house on the end of the one.
Well, it's a good thing they got you.
Good feeling.
Handyman. Okay. All right. Well, with that being said, we're just gonna kind of jump into some of the questions that we have. When I ask the candidates, it is not gonna be in any particular order. It's just gonna be, it's just gonna be random and I'll try my best to mix it up a little bit. This one's for you, Brian. First question is, is what encouraged you to run for this office?
The condition of the state in twenty-twenty and all of the political insanity. I vote like it's my religion. I love government, I love our country and I love our community, but this year, I decided that I needed to do more than vote and more than represent myself as a person that I believe. And my wife told me that there was a position open in city government and I thought, what better way to actually affect anything than try to affect the town in which I live? The state's the state and they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but this is our community and I want to take part in our community and make sure that our community is as least affected by all of this stupidity in the government that surrounds us.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Todd, why are you seeking reelection?
Well, when I first ran, I ran with no agenda other than wanting to see the city run better and we, my goal was for the city to run like clockwork and I didn't feel that's how it was running and we have made some changes with staff and we're heading in the right direction. We're not there yet, but we will get there.
Thank you, Todd. Wayne, you're up.
I, you know, I was, you know, kind of new at all this stuff and what really made me want to run for Maple Lake is when, many, some of you know that my brother was killed in a grain bin this summer. And I watched people from Maple Lake come out there and some of them knew him and some of them didn't. And the fire department worked there for about nine hours and everybody, it was hot and everybody just pitched in, you know, and you start thinking and it kind of changes you. You think about other things than just yourself, you're just gonna, I wanted to just get more active in the community and I think that I could probably be a help with some of the, you know, background that I have, you know, in construction work and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. John, what encouraged you to run for this office?
Well, twenty-five years later, after I was on previously, I kind of looked at what was going on. I actually had a couple of calls from people at work for Maple Lake suggesting that I run and it just seemed to be a good fit. I do have some concerns about ordinances. I do have my flyers up here if anybody'd like a copy, but I'm just kind of looking under my agenda and city ordinance review, I think, is one big thing on my bucket list that I would like to see done. We do have a nuisance ordinance and it basically allows the city to call anything at any time for any reason a nuisance and it can be really arbitrarily applied and I'm not really a fan of that. As far as the farmer's market, that was a going proposition. I really think it was a service to the city. I'd like to see that come back. I think the farmer's market was really a popular thing and I, it has been operational now for the last couple of years. Affordable housing is another thing on my list. I would like, I know a lot of the seniors, I'm familiar with up at Maple Manor, they would like to see more of that happening. And last but not least, the long-range infrastructure. We need a long-range plan, I think, to work on our sewer, our streets, our alleys. These are concerns that I have and I would like to see, I'd like to work on.
Thank you, John. Todd, this one's for you. Todd, you've been here all your life, born and raised here. Mayor, one term, correct or two?
One.
One term. So with that being said, Todd, what do you see as Maple Lake's strongest asset?
Our people. I think we have diversity of citizens. We're a, we've got the small-town feel. We've grown a lot since I was younger. I can remember before, we had a thousand people, that was a big deal. When we hit a thousand, went over a thousand with the population, it was a big deal. We were a village, we weren't a city. So I just, I just care for the community.
Thank you, Todd. Brian, you've been here four short years, is that correct?
Two years.
Two years, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
In the two years that you've been here, have you been able to get your head around what you feel is Maple Lake's strong suit?
I think that there's plenty of strong suits. There's much more than one. I mean, we're located on a major highway through the state. That's something that really works in our favor for things like Gearhead or St. Patrick's Day or things like that, for people to come to the city with ease of access. That's a really fantastic thing. You know, and if you live in town, you live on this side of fifty-five, there's a great city park here for kids. I'm there two or three times a week with my girl. It's a beautiful city park. There's a couple of different small parks in the town. It's a welcoming community. You know, I live, I live north of fifty-five behind Dollar General and it's just, it's younger families with younger kids. It's a nice feeling. I grew up, I grew up in Malax Lake, in a town much smaller than Maple Lake has ever been. I graduated, I graduated from a school with twenty-six people. This is still a big town for me and I love its location and I really love its opportunity for growth, you know. Todd, as you were saying, when you, when you hit one thousand, that was a big deal. I was looking up at the population growth of Maple Lake and what, twenty years ago, it was sixteen-hundred people. What's it going to be now with this new census number? It's two thousand, I would imagine it's gonna be twenty-five-hundred. We are inevitably, inevitably going to grow and we as a city council and city governing body really need to be able to put together a good, solid plan to accommodate that growth. And I think that, I really think that we have a great opportunity to do that. And as John said, there's, there was a farmer's market in town. I have not visited the farmer's market in town, I was told it was, it was kind of small. I have a history with growing farmer's markets, that's how I started, one of my, that's how I started my barbecue business. I would love to see a large farmer market in there, sir, because that's, that really does bring people together. It brings a lot of people out. Sir?
Just fifteen seconds.
Oh, thank you. Those are all my points.
Thank you, Brian. John, what do you feel is Maple Lake's strong suit?
Well, I think, you know, just tagging onto the farmer's market thing. I think the fact that we really do have, have some wonderful parks in town, especially the old traditional, long-lasting park down, you know, between the railroad tracks and Division Street. That's where the farmer's market should be and I'd like to promote that. They have restroom facilities down there, permanent restroom facilities, they have shade trees, it's available, you know, on weekends, so it wouldn't conflict with ballgames or that sort of thing. Be a perfect location. In addition to the parks, I think the people, you know, I think that's, when I went out campaigning, I met a lot of people that are new families in town and they really, you know, they're interested in the school district, they think we have a good school system, they think the city itself is working like it should be, you know. I think there's a lot of good things going on in Maple Lake.
Thank you, John. And Wayne, last but not least, what do you feel is Maple Lake's strong points?
It goes, it comes back to the people in the town. It seems like, you know, you're not, you're not a stranger in this town very long. All of a sudden, you know, you're a neighbor and that's, and, you know, and we got churches, diversity of churches and it seemed like everyone is thriving. People have, you know, a yearn for religion in this town and it's always been that way. You know, and the schools, the schools are wonderful, you know. There's people that live actually out of this school district that bring their kids into Maple Lake just because of the schools and the education. And it's gonna grow, this town is gonna grow, you know. When I started driving to the cities, you had to drive down all the way to Highway a hundred before you seen a lot of, a lot of, you know, growth and now, you know, it's here, right next to us. Thanks.
Thank you, Wayne. This next question is for Mayor Todd Burrell. Todd, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing Maple Lake?
Housing. Lifecycle housing. I know this is brought up and everybody's gonna say the same thing, but we're out of residential lots other than the multifamily areas that are left out here and industrial, we're out of industrial. So we do have two pieces of property, one north and one south, on the fringes here that there's, there's works on both of them. So hopefully, within this next coming year, something will start at one or the other place and have, get back to some single-family homes and, but we need the whole lifecycle.
Thank you, Todd. Wayne, I'm gonna pick on you on this question first. What, if anything, would you like to change about Maple Lake and how do you feel change comes about? Two, two parts to that question. What, if anything, would you like to change about Maple Lake and how do you feel that change comes about?
I don't know. I guess I, I'd be, that's a hard question, the change in Maple Lake, it's, there isn't a whole lot I would change, but, you know, we gotta start working on the streets that we have and some of the, you like the sewer problems, you know, there is some sewer things that should be changed and I guess I really doesn't, you know, would know, you know, I know how to do that stuff myself, but to go into detail, I just can't, can't tell it.
Sure, sure. So there's nothing for you right now, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, just trying to, you know, kind of be clear on some, but there's nothing, it's like you don't have an agenda, you're not running because you have an agenda or you want...
No, I, but, you know, like Todd said, you know, what we have to do, you know, there is, out here, there is places for single-family homes, out here, out north, there's some dead-end streets that could be added on to, but, you know, we just have to, we gotta make it so that people, you know, you know, like a developer would want to come in and start putting in streets and stuff like that. And also the, you know, the industrial end of it, we are out of space for that except out here on Highway fifty-five. You know, that's a big, big issue for this town right now.
Thank you, Wayne. John, I'll repeat the question. What, if anything, would you like to change about Maple Lake? And the second part to that question is, how do you feel change comes about?
Well, getting back to the infrastructure, I, you know, I, I guess I feel there's, in talking with the maintenance guys, I guess I feel there's a real need to maybe upgrade some of our equipment. The leaf sweeper went by the other day and my understanding is, we got it second-hand, it's a two thousand and four model and it wasn't sweeping up leaves like it should. In fact, it was dumping leaves as it went across the railroad tracks. So I think we need to upgrade some of our equipment. We have a great maintenance department, but they, they need to have the, you know, equipment that's reliable to work with. I think they do a great job removing snow in the winter. So the second part of your question is, how do we make change? Well, I think one of the first things, and I have that on my agenda, is bring back the water bill questionnaires and let's let the public decide about some of these things, you know, what do they think needs to be done? What do they see as issues that we should be dealing with? We used to send out a water bill questionnaire, maybe twice a year, and we got some really good ideas about what to do. But I think infrastructure, we need to get sidewalks on the agenda. Some of these sidewalks are just totally broken up. We need repaving some of the streets, you know, we're fixing potholes on top of potholes. So there's a number of things that really need to be done in regards to infrastructure.
Brian, would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, no, no, I got it right here. I just realized there are three guys in a room way smarter than me on that question. I didn't realize we were out of housing lots or industrial lots. That is definitely something that needs to be done in the city to be taken care of. I'd also like to see the city try to help people to become entrepreneurs in the city. You know, one of the biggest issues that I saw coming here is, I had no idea there was anything south of the highway. You can't see downtown from anywhere here until you cross the road. First time I learned about it was, was at Gearhead. I would love to make sure that we have a thriving downtown with small businesses that not only people have access to, but they know about. And if the city could provide grants or at least give access to grants, loans and put that out there for people to start and create, that's something fantastic. I mean, industry is, is wonderful and employs many people, but small businesses are the heart of any community. You know, I was talking earlier and I have one moderate agenda. I would love to put a cafe in town in a few years. I think that would be fantastic. And we need more things like that in our community so that people can keep and have that sense of community in our own town instead of going someplace else.
Thank you, Brian. I'm gonna deviate from the questions for just, just a moment and when I sat where you gentlemen are, I, I had the belief that, we'll just say there's five or six bullet points. I firmly believe that the role of city government was this. When people dialed nine-one-one, they wanted the sheriff's department or the fire department to respond. I believe that when people turn their water on, they wanted to get fresh, good, clean drinking water. I believe that in the winter, the residents wanted to have plowed streets. I believe they wanted to, when they flushed their toilet, they wanted to make sure that everything worked properly. And they wanted to have good streetlights, they wanted to have some safety. That was my belief on the role that I served as mayor. We're talking about a lot of things. I don't know if we're making assumptions or if some of you know things that I don't know, but there are a number of items that have been brought up that cost money. Infrastructure costs money. Go out and buy new equipment costs money. Where's that money gonna come from? So with that being said, John, what do you feel is the role of city government?
Well, I think you stated it pretty clearly.
Yeah, but I'm not running.
It's to meet the needs of the people, you know, and to identify what those needs are. And if we need a new street sweeper, you know, it's gonna function and operate the way it should, maybe we should look into putting out some bids and make that happen. I'm a real proponent of getting that lot up here on the tax rolls again. And if we could, maybe, and Todd, maybe you can address that. I don't know where the council is on it currently, but I'm, you know, that might be the location to put some, it's a city lot and it's available and we haven't been able to sell it for a number of years. Maybe that would be a good location to put some sort of a high-rise up like Buffalo's been doing, you know, and they, they put a high-rise up in their downtown area. So it isn't unheard of, you know, that, that would be a good fit. You know, we, excuse me, we need to meet, you know, the needs of the people as they express what those needs are and I think we can have a finger on the pulse of the community with some questionnaires that go out periodically to the citizens and see what their thoughts are. You're right, these things do cost money and we don't want to raise taxes, that's always a, you know, a big red flag, but, you know, maybe some creative ways of how we could do something. Out at the airport, we have hangars that we used to rent, you know, that was an income. Buffalo... Buffalo has a golf course, you know, so maybe there's other sources of income other than taxation.
Thank you, John. Brian, what do you think is the role of city government?
Do you want Wayne to answer that?
I'm sorry, Wayne, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The role of the city government is to, you know, is to listen to the people and execute, you know, you know, they're, they're the ones that are making the rules, but they should be listening to everybody around them so that everybody gets a say in it. They have to, you know, they gotta, you know, they gotta take the money that's coming into it and be able, you know, to spend it in a, a way that it's gonna help the city and all the people around it. You know, if you need a piece of equipment for something, yes, maybe you have to buy it. But, you know, sometimes there's times when, you know, a piece of equipment is gonna cost so much that a secondhand piece will maybe do the job, maybe there's something wrong with it, that can be fixed pretty, you know, for not a lot of money. But that's what I think the city, the city council is, it's, it's for the people.
Very good, thank you, Wayne. Brian, sorry about that.
No, 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 it's totally fine, sir. I, I actually have to tell you, I've lived in different cities my whole life, and I've always taken for granted that the streets are plowed and the lights were on and everything else like that, because that's what, that is what city government does. But I also believe, at the end of the day, the only revenue, the, the revenue from the city needs to come from more than taxation. We have the ability to create revenue streams, something like a farmer's market, I know the, the municipal liquor store is owned by the city, so I'm sure that's, that, that's, that's something that generates revenue. We can create other things like that, that not only lower the tax burden, but then create income for the city. Government shouldn't be run as a for-profit thing, but we can still create revenue sources that help relieve tax burdens and, you know, make it easier for people to afford to live here.
Thank you, Brian. Wayne, this one is for you. In your opinion, Wayne, what are the main issues facing Maple Lake? And how do you address them if elected?
The main issues for Maple Lake is, right now is kind of, I think it's a lack of, you know, there's, the housing is, you know, it's dead still right now, and with, you know, and we need more infra, you know, like the, you know, like for businesses and stuff like that. And what was the second part of that?
Now, Wayne, how would you address it?
Well, you gotta find a way to actually get, you know, the businesses to come into town, if you're gonna give them a tax break or something like that. And I know that, you know, there's other villages that have done this, and it does help. But, you know, you can't, you know, you can't just give stuff away either, you know, you, you gotta have commitment from people, so.
Very good, Wayne. Brian, what do you feel are the main issues facing Maple Lake?
I think one of the biggest one is going to hit us potentially next year. When COVID ends, and it will, when emergency orders are lifted, and they will, it potentially could create a large foreclosure and eviction problem in this city. I know right now, foreclosure is eliminated and evictions are eliminated. When all of this is off, those people that were falling behind on that for months, we may have a big vacancy problem in this city. We could have a huge decrease in property value, which is gonna really, which is going to cause some issues. We need to prepare for that as a city. And I'll be honest, I don't know how we do that, but I think as a governing board, we not only have to prepare, but discuss, anticipate, and find a solution for that. We also, last week I was, I was called to a meeting with a guy for a couple hours, and I learned a lot about politics in Maple Lake that I really didn't wanna learn about. But one of the things that I learned was that the Chamber of Commerce here is volunteer, is that true? Anybody? If we're gonna have, and we have a wonderful space for celebration in town here, we have a lot of open space, we have a great location for it. We need to bring the Chamber of Commerce somehow under, under the umbrella of the city and make it work for the advantage of the city. We can. Todd's shaking his head, so I don't know, it was just, it was an idea, so I have no idea.
Thank you, Brian. John, want me to repeat the question?
Please.
What are the main issues facing Maple Lake? And how would you address them if you were elected?
Well, if I go back 25 years, one of the main issues was safety at the railroad crossings. And the way I addressed it, I, it was a campaign promise that I'd get flashing signals in gates, you know, at the crossings. And the way we went about doing it, we had to do surveys, we had to get the railroad on track, literally, the city, the county, they all were willing to contribute a portion to make that happen. So seeking grants to, you know, for the sake of public safety, I think is, is something that needs to be done. I, I go back to this lot thing, we've had a vacant lot up here for gosh knows how long, and it's doing nothing. It's, it's, they use it for Gearhead once a year, you know, which is great. The farmer's market is defunct, so it doesn't get used for that, so it just sits up there waiting for, for somebody with a creative mind to, you know, figure out what to do with it. We sold the old liquor store for a dollar to the insurance agent way back when, and then he went and stabilized the establishment, and the building is still standing at the time, they said it, it, you know, was doomed. We need some creative thinking about how to make things happen. And I, I, I would like to bring that, you know, back to the council.
Thank you, John. You know, every one of the candidates up here, including Todd, the mayor, have all talked about this, the, the, the strong asset of our community is its people. And we're, we're in a tough, tough spot. Every one of us here tonight has talked about, we have a shortage of housing, we're gonna grow. How are we gonna grow? How are we gonna direct that growth? With that being said, my next question is, and I'll start with Todd. Where do you see the balance between maintaining a small-town feel? And I don't even know if that's important anymore, I don't even know if that's a priority, but where is the balance between maintaining a small-town feel and welcoming new businesses and people to our community?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of Maple Lake exploding. I want Maple Lake to stay a small town. And we do have to have some growth, and if we can keep our businesses downtown or buildings downtown full, that's a plus. But the city has no control over who's gonna rent that building, or who's gonna bring that business into town. The city has no control over if this developer's gonna build houses out here or not, the city's not in the position to buy that land and develop that land, we don't have the money to do it. So without a developer, we sit where we're at. So, and, and that's where the two people that are, have the properties, north and south, that's where they're working towards. So, I don't know, was there more to that question?
Well, no, no, I think you answered it very candidly and very honestly, and I think people appreciate that, people wanna know where you stand, and, and I think you've said that perfectly. John, you're eager to go, you wanna answer this question?
No, I, I just wanted to ask Todd, is there such a thing as tax increment financing anymore, or is that all out the window?
Sure there is.
Is that something maybe we could use as a revenue source?
We do, we use it now.
Okay.
Pace has just used it, prior to me being on.
Okay.
So Deb would know more about that, or Kirk, they've been on longer.
Yep, they have a revolving loan fund, yep, it's all in place, been used.
Now, there's programs out to help these people get businesses started in town, if someone's willing to start one, so.
What, what's the story on the lot, then? Was the agreement that that would be developed, I'm a little fuzzy on the history of that.
It's for sale, that's all I know.
Okay.
So they're just waiting for somebody to buy it?
Right.
And that's out of, you know, out of your control?
Would tax increment, I mean, would we sell it for a dollar?
Depends what's gonna go there.
Okay.
Are we gonna sell it for a dollar and put a hundred square foot building on there? Absolutely not. You know, you're gonna want the city to benefit from it, or you're not gonna sell the lot.
Well, I thought...
You have control over that lot.
Didn't they set some parameters for who would purchase the lot at some point in the past?
They could have.
You know, based on what you're saying, what, what goes in there?
And you're gonna wanna, you're gonna want the city to benefit from what's going in there, or you're, or you're gonna, the city has control of that lot, we own it. So you're not just gonna sell it just to sell the lot.
Right.
You know, it needs to be a fit for downtown.
Do you think low-income housing would be a fit?
Low-income housing, I say no.
Or senior housing, maybe?
Yeah, so.
Okay, we'll move on. Brian, I will repeat the question. You've been in a few different, as you described, small towns, Maple Lake is a big town from where you come from. Where do you see the balance, because you mentioned it, and you said that we are gonna grow?
It, it's inevitable that we grow.
Where do you see that balance between a small-town feel and trying to encourage growth?
I actually agree with Todd, I would never wanna see this community blown up, I, I think that would be awful for the community. You know, there's no reason, you know, Anandale's what, about twice the size of we are? We have enough room here and space to accomplish roughly about that size. I love the feel of this town, and that is truly accomplished by its people. You know, I've known people that have lived in neighborhoods in St. Paul, and you go in there and it feels more homey and small-town, this, it was really strange to me. But this is, it's a community, it's, it's going to grow, and we have to make sure that it grows well and that it grows under some control. I, I don't know of much, I don't know enough about large businesses coming here to know how to accomplish that, but I know that if we're going to stay within the confines of the space that we currently have, we can't add a whole bunch of industry, nobody wants to live by that, nobody wants to look out their window and just see massive structures. But what we have here is, what we have here is nice, and we have to make sure that that's, that that's kept. And that really does come from the community itself, that doesn't come from government and anything that we would do here, that comes from just the community.
Well, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? See, it's a little bit of a conundrum, because if you want to have, if you wanna have industrial growth, you need to have housing for the employees to live in. And then with that, you need to have maybe a spot where you could have some amenities, maybe a grocery store, maybe some other things. Now, I'm not advocating any of these, but, you know, which comes first? So all these things, you know, go hand in hand, and you need one to have the other and vice versa. John, how do you maintain that balance between the small-town feel and encouraging growth?
Well, I agree with Todd, I, I like the feel of a small town. You know, I, I think we need growth to help our tax base, I think we need growth out in the industrial area, and certainly with that, we need growth in terms of the residential area. But I, I think it has to be carefully monitored, you know, getting back to long-range planning like I suggested for infrastructure for the city. You know, we have to plan for controlled growth, you know, not just explosive growth like you guys were mentioning earlier. So, you know, I, I guess the, the simple answer to that question is, we, we, we like what we have. People argue that, you know, everything goes, you know, seven miles west or seven miles east, you know, Buffalo gets all the industry, Anandale gets all the industry, they bypass Maple Lake. Well, that's not necessarily all bad, you know, because with additional out-of-control growth, you have to deal with infrastructure. You need to spend money, raise taxes probably, to, you know, for expanded sewer, so it's a trade-off.
Thank you, John. Wayne, I'll just repeat the question. You mentioned earlier that you feel that, you know, one of our strong suits is, is the people, the residents of this community. So where do you see the balance between a small-town feel and welcoming new growth?
I really like the small-town feel, but, you know, you gotta be realistic on this, you know, we have industry in this town, and every one of these places started out as a small, small business, you know, you got Bernatello's, you got, you know, Rhino out there, and Cedar Lake Engineering. But these guys all had areas where they were, where their lots were, that they could grow, and that's what we have to have, we have to have that area. And if you get businesses that come in and they, they succeed, you know, and they keep growing, it's gonna, the, the people are gonna come and they're gonna look for housing, and, you know, then the, the more houses you get, then you get a grocery store. You may get, you know, like a, you know, like a car, you know, business where somebody's gonna sell cars, or a garage, and you're, you know, like you wanna have a, you know, like a diner here or cafe, that's, that all comes with that. And it, you know, we don't have to just, ding, all of a sudden you're a huge city, that's not gonna happen anyway, but you gotta, you just gotta take steps.
Well, I think we all agree we need to grow. You know, if, if we were running a business, and many of you run a business here, and if your business made $10 a year, year in and year out, and you just said, no, I just wanna stay a small business making $10 a year. Well, those of you who run your own businesses know that the price of gas goes up, your insurances go up, your licenses go up, all these expenses that you have keep going up. So you have to continue to make, grow your business and make a little more money every year to offset those expenses that keep, keep going up. So I like your answers, thank you. Todd, this one's for you. Are there any policies or procedures you would like to see put in place that would change things significantly? And you can throw out that last word if you want to or not. But what policies or procedures would you like to see put in place that would change things?
I'm not sure if there's many, if any, but I would like to see, when we are dealing with ordinances, a way to resolve issues without it costing the taxpayers lots of money sometimes. Some of your ordinances, someone can be cited for an ordinance violation, and some people comply, and some people don't. And the ones that don't end up costing the taxpayers money because you have to fight it. And that would be the only thing I would really like to tackle.
Okay, thank you. Todd, this one's for you too. This is a tough one, I'm sorry. I didn't make, don't shoot the messenger. Todd, in the past two years, what has the council accomplished as you being the mayor?
Well, I mentioned some of that when I introduced myself, and I feel we have replaced some of the staff that was leaving and some that wasn't leaving. And I believe we have the staff we need in place right now for this city to run like clockwork, but we're just not quite there yet. We have a great maintenance department, we have a great staff at the liquor store, and we have a great staff at City Hall. And I feel the council is here to serve the people, set policy, and make decisions. Our employees are here to run the city. That's it.
Very good. Wayne, this one's for you, and this is the last question for the council candidates. Wayne? Wayne, do you want to, um, tell the people why you would be a good choice for the Maple Lake City Council?
You know, born and raised here, and I wanna be part of the city. I've only lived in, in the city itself for twenty years, and, and I've seen quite a bit of, you know, work done on sewer, infrastructure and stuff, and that's where I, you know, worked all my life. I've worked for forty years in that, in that part, and hopefully, you know, I can help out in some of that. But, you know, it's, it, you just gotta be there for people if they want, you know, somebody to talk to. And that's about it. You know, you just gotta, you gotta be there for the people. The, if somebody wants to call and, you know, just chew my ear or something, I'll, I'll be there for them.
Brian, why would you be a good candidate for the City Council?
I agree. I think that government, especially a small-town government, my job is to serve the community. My job is not to dictate and enforce rules upon a community. I also, I'm very much willing to listen to the citizens of the community to find out what we can do collectively just to make it better. And it's already very good. I, I don't like to use the word "better" there, 'cause it makes it sound like it's bad. But we've got a very good community, and I very much want the opportunity to listen to the community to just make sure it stays good and it grows up well. I, I would make a good candidate, 'cause I have time. I'm at home all day with my girls, and so I, I have time to go out and do stuff and, you know, talk with people and, you know, really dedicate the time I have to make sure the community moves forward.
Thank you, Brian. And John, why would you be a good choice for Maple Lake City Council?
Well, I, I think I have the experience. I certainly have the time now that I'm retired. I know I've talked to Todd about ordinances in the past, and I think we agree that, uh, we have ordinances that definitely need to be reviewed, simplified, made to work, you know, where people are being harmed. I think green dust settling over the entire town, I think that's a violation of a nuisance ordinance that needs to be addressed. I think counting the number of things that a person has in front of their house, uh, I don't see that as harmful to people, and I don't see that as worthy of being a court case. So I've had experience in those areas. I, I have a real passion for Maple Lake. I've been here since nineteen seventy. I've been here longer than my hometown in Mancato. And, uh, I've really seen how things have evolved in this town. I think we've had a fairly decent council. I, I was glad to see Todd go in as mayor. I, I think it's a welcoming council. I think if people come before this council, uh, they are going to be pleasantly surprised that, you know, they're well-received, and I think the people on the council have been willing to listen and, and help. So I don't have any axes to grind or anything like that. But, uh, I have paid for my own campaign. I'm not beholding to anybody other than the taxpayers themselves.
Very good. Thank you, John.
And I haven't been approached by anybody to pay for my campaign.
Todd, is your heart still in it?
Yep.
Good. You like that big salary, huh?
Yeah.
I always told everybody, I always told everybody that pay didn't pay for the Aspen or Maybachs. I wanna thank the three, and we have a few more questions here, some from the, maybe from the audience, and some that were emailed in to us. But, um, just so I don't forget, I wanna thank, uh, not only the four of you, but specifically the three of you running for City Council. It takes a lot of courage. It takes intestinal fortitude. I have always been of the belief, in a small town, it's different when you're in a larger city. But in a small town, I always believed that if everybody was forced to sit on the City Council for one term, or to sit on the school board for one term, they would really get, uh, understanding and an idea of what it's like to, um, to run a school or to run a, run a small city and be involved with all the policy and procedures and the decision-making process. It's not easy. It really isn't. And, uh, so I, I do, I thank you for stepping up to the plate and wanting to, wanting to make a difference. With that being said, I am going to open it up to the audience to see if anybody has any questions for either the mayor-elect-to-be, maybe? To-be? Uh, or the candidates for City Council?
Do you have to come up there, Mike, or what?
Well, I think you could just ask your question from there, and I could repeat it if you want to, or if you don't feel comfortable up here, I don't wanna force you.
It don't matter.
Sure. Then come on out.
My name is Deb Guyan, and I'm currently on the City Council on every side at four hundred Oak Avenue South in Maple Lake, and my question is for all the candidates. And some of you had, uh, talked about an industrial park. Um, so my question to you folks is, we currently have no industrial sites left. Eight or ten years ago, we started working on it. We actually did a tour of all the areas around the city of Maple Lake. We came up with eleven, twelve sites that were possibility sites to have our next industrial park, okay? And it's been an ongoing thing. We missed out on the Maven Camp property just north of town here. Some folks were dragging their feet, was my belief. Um, that would've been perfect. We had the infrastructure, everything right to it already. So my question to you is, um, we are currently out, so if another business wants to come here, they can't. We have no more room. So if you are elected, um, what is the importance, um, do you have, do you place in an industrial park development? And would you work on acquiring and developing more land for an industrial development? Uh, go ahead, John.
I guess my understanding is, when that industrial park was created north of town, you know, it was a big area that could be expanded upon. You know, could be, uh, adjoining properties could be annexed for future purposes. And I know when I campaigned out in that area, I was just totally impressed. It's so different from twenty-five years ago, when it was just kind of a dream. Right now, there's some humongous buildings out there. There's a lot of activity going on, uh, you know? And so my thought is, yes, we, we need to expand. If, if we're totally down to ground zero, where we have no room to expand, maybe we need to be approaching some of the, uh, adjoining farms and, and property owners and see if they're willing to sell. I know there's been talk in the past, uh, on the south side of town, annexing Ramsey Lake. You know, bringing those properties into the tax rolls. I don't know whatever happened to that idea, but I know that was a hot issue for a while. I, I don't think it ever happened.
That was along with, I think, the sewer going in and out there.
Okay.
I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike. With the new sewer plant, that was the plan back then. Um, and yes, it never happened, John. But to stick to the industrial, um, that park is full, yes. It was built with, with the point of expanding. I believe it started in the eighties. It is now full. And like I said, we were looking at the Maven Camp property for a long time, and-
So is that the only property, adjoining property that could be annexed then?
Um, Pete's, that property's already in city limits. That's already Maple Lake. So we looked, um, eight, ten years ago, we drove around, the planning commission, and there was about eleven different sites that surrounded the city. I mean, all the way up, a mile down fifty-five, out on thirty-seven, out this way, out this way.
So what's the status of the other ten?
It, it's just at a stagnant. Nobody's, it, it hasn't happened.
Nobody's stepping up to the fight.
So with, with that comes, again, you have to buy the property somehow. It's gotta be bought. The infrastructure's gotta go in. The infrastructure was already out here. That's a lot of money. It'd be nice to have somebody come on board as an anchor tenant and have that first big thing once, once it's all produced. But the point and the question I'm asking is, it is full. So my question to you guys is, would you, I mean, how important is an industrial, additional industrial? We have a, we have a wonderful industrial park now for the town our size. Oh, my God. We are bigger than Anandale for industrial. Absolutely. We are very fortunate.
So the option would be to shut it down and not expand?
No, 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 shut it down. It's where it is.
Well, not shut it down, but not expand.
My, my question is, is it important for you to expand or not expand? And would you work on getting the land to acquire it, I guess?
I'd like to comment on that.
Yeah.
The land north of the industrial park is not suitable for industrial. So the city wasted a lot of money on this study we did.
Okay.
And picked these sites out, but soil boring should've been done before we decided with our comprehensive plan where we were gonna go.
Okay.
So that, that is more suitable for residential than commercial.
Okay.
So if we're gonna take, choose some of these other sites, which we just had a planning and zoning meeting last night and decided it's time to start over.
Okay.
And you have to be able to annex property in, which the city has set up for orderly annexation.
Yep.
And you have to have area big enough to expand.
Correct.
So-
So Todd, what about the airport area? Is there any room for expansion for industrial around, around there?
No, there's not even room to expand the airport, so you can't expand industrial.
Well, there was a time they wanted to put the airport between the three cities, Monticello, Buffalo, and Maple Lake, you know, you know?
Well, that, that was when they were probably trying to go federally designated.
Getting back to the industrial park, the city doesn't have the money to purchase the land-
Correct.
For an industrial park. So, you know, the city of Delano stuck their neck out and built the industrial park. Didn't go real well for them.
But now it is. They got toughies coming in. It's a hundred and fifty thousand-
I understand that.
Yeah, they had to wait, so they stuck their neck out for a while, but now they got a hundred and fifty thousand square-foot building coming in, toughies, so it's gonna create, I don't know how many jobs, but-
You still need-
They were shovel-ready.
You still need a developer.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's-
Yep. Yep, go ahead, Brian.
Do we have industry that's knocking on the door to come in here?
We, uh, we could, I-
Well, you asked a question about growth. So if you're gonna put out a hypothetical, do we, as a city, have industry saying, "I want to put a hundred thousand square-foot building in your town"? How can we make it happen?
Okay, so, yes, we did a few-
Because if we, as a city council, want to take money and stick our neck out, which I personally feel would be foolish, and buy land and set something up and go, "Come on!"
Yeah.
Well, that's a major loss for the city. If we have people say, "I would like to put a major building in your city and hire a whole bunch of people. Can you help me do that?", then, yes, we have to act. Until that time, it makes no sense to risk that much money and that much space.
But, but a lot of times, and I understand what you're saying, Brian, but a lot of times, to get that ready, a lot of people want it shovel-ready right now. So to get that ready is gonna take time. So if IBM wants to come in here and employ three hundred people, but they wanna do it within six months, it ain't happening.
That, that's-
That's my point. So, and we did have a problem a few years back. We had a, we had a building out here, um, and I, I don't need to go on too much longer. They needed a bigger building, so, and it was a big business for our post office. We had nowhere for them to go. They were gonna go to Anandale. We were gonna lose a hundred employees. Now, we all know what happened when Red hadn't been left here, leaving with a hundred employees. So we worked, we looked, and we looked, and we looked. Finally, a gentleman out here that owned some property sold it to us. And we in turn sold it to this company for one dollar to keep them a hundred employees here. Now, they only lasted here five years, but that's what we did as a city. We're out of room.
Well, why did they only last here five years?
Huh?
Why did that business only last here five years? Did they get a better offer?
They moved on. Let's just say that.
Okay.
So I, I don't know. I don't know the details, Brian. But that, so that's my question. We have no more industrial parks, so what would you guys do? Do you feel it's important?
Absolutely, it's important. But you have to have a potential occupant for it. You can't just build it and say, "Come". You, you have to have, you have to have a reason to build it and say, "Come". You have to develop relationships with those people.
You can't force them to stay once they do come.
No, there are a lot of places-
We sold the building in this little liquor store for a dollar, with the understanding we'd have a laundromat in this town for gosh knows how long. And within a few years, that all folded. We had no laundromat.
And I don't need to go on much longer, John, but just to clarify, when we sold that building, that lot out there for a dollar, they had, I think it was a year and a half to get that building up and running, or that property came back to the city. So we had placed stuff in place. Absolutely.
I've actually got a point on this. I lived in the city of Shakopee for about fifteen years.
Yeah.
City of Shakopee, decent-sized community, blown up now because they have Amazon. Now, Amazon gamed cities against each other for these wonderful tax benefits. The city of Shakopee, oh, God, something like three hundred acres that they put this god-awful monstrosity of a building on. And all it did, because of the deal that the city cut, was increase property taxes in the city of Shakopee by twenty-five percent. They gave them a deal which they can bail out of a three-hundred-acre building on in something like ten years. Why would we, as a city, even potentially want to do something like that? If we're going to develop something, potentially spend money to access something, for somebody to come in here and then just maybe out? 'Cause big businesses, like, you wanna reference IBM, Google, they, all they care about is an almighty dollar. That's it. And if you want businesses like that in here, they'll rob you in the end.
I'm just saying, a big business in general, whether it's toughies from Delano, anything, Brian. I'm just saying, we, we don't have the room, so-
That was a nationwide search with Amazon.
Yes, it was, and they gamed a lot of cities.
They hit Mancato. We're gonna have a tough time here, because you're out here, you go north, and that's not suitable. And you go east, you got the, the lakes. And that's, that's gonna be a tough deal there, because you gotta get rid of the sewage. You could go out here south, you know, and into John McAlpin's. That way, that would be the cheapest way to go with your sewer, because your, your lift station is right there. But now you're gonna get outside of town out here west, and the railroad will not give you an access across the railroad tracks. That's out. They will not.
What do you mean, Wayne?
You know, like where the, the snowmobiles cross out here?
Yeah.
They will not give you, they won't even let you cross there with a combine and stuff. You can, they won't give you an access. We thought about, you know, developing where we live, you know, selling that for development years back. We found out that access that we got for a driveway, they will not let you build homes back there and use that. So you'd have to go all the way out to thirty-seven, and then that's all, that, that would be, that hole works out there, you'd have to-
That was one of the sites out there too, was across from the airport. That was one of them. So, anyway, that's, um, that's all I had. So, thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Yep.
Thanks, Deb. Anybody else? We have fifty minutes. We can ask questions all night.
Better, we can go home early.
What about the email ones? Okay, can I just do it from here?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, I almost feel a little weird asking, because Todd's been in my house. But, um, earlier this summer, um, on the Maple Lake community page, someone had done an aerial, or just, just a photograph, and, and there was just this huge, just like, I'm just gonna say junkyard. I mean, just, it was just crazy. And, okay, so my question is to you, John. Many members of the community have asked, how can someone who's in violation of several city ordinances and has refused to comply, which has cost the taxpayers several dollars, still feel comfortable or qualified to be run as City Council?
Well, first of all, that picture was taken not with the intention of singling out a person with a junkyard. Secondly, the junkyard is enclosed in a fence, and I have complied with city requests periodically to deal with what they feel were concerns. So I, I added a fence, to fence in most of the area there that didn't have a fence between the railroad tracks and, and the property that you're talking about. Once it's behind the fence, you're, you're, you know, you're in compliance. It's, it's not that you're out of compliance. Uh, once it's behind the fence, you're, you're, you know, you're in compliance. It's, it's not that you're out of compliance. Now, as far as things that are, you know, temporarily stored outside that are gonna be brought inside, that is still being done. And I, I think if you check with City Hall, there, that, that brings me back to the nuisance ordinance, you know. They can deem anything at any time for any reason to be a nuisance. And I've been through that mill, you know, where I get one thing dealt with, and then all of a sudden, there's two other things that need to be done.
Even if for the museum, I mean, it's, you really have a lot of things.
Well, the museum itself, the, the building itself, we just put a $30,000 roof on it, you know, and we had a lot of expense and a lot of damage and a lot of time that's, you know, gone into that. So it, the museum, the, the flea market has been up and, and operating, but the museum is still a work in progress. And I, I'm running, you know, because I, I, I feel there's a real inequity on how the ordinances are enforced and how they're interpreted. Todd says we should simplify the ordinances. I know we've had this talk in the past. Let's have ordinances that people understand, that apply the same standards for everybody. People get excited about the junkyard, you know, enclosed in a fence. Why don't they get excited about grain dust that's blowing over and polluting the entire town and putting an eighth of an inch residue on all your property? You know, that's a bigger nuisance. I mean, a nuisance, the definition of a nuisance should be something that's harmful to people, not something that maybe doesn't look all that great.
So when you have that much going on in an area, you've got rodents and what, I mean, you've just got everything that can just-
I don't have rodents.
I'm just saying.
The elevator has rodents.
Just saying.
For the, for the record, what is your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Julie Dahl. I live out here, um, 321 Power 55.
Julie, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
John, you had to have known that some of these issues were gonna come up. You had to have known when you decided to throw your, your hat in the ring that some of this was gonna, gonna come up.
Yep.
Um, some of the questions that were emailed in, we have already addressed, such as Christine emailed in, "I would like to know why each of the candidates decided to run for the city council." Christine, I'm just gonna go on the record and say, "I think we've answered that question." Um, there are a couple other good questions here. This one is from Kirk, and it is addressed to Mr. Hack. Mr. Hack, "When you were on the city council, you sued two city council members for slander, and you won, resulting in personal damages for each. With that history, and with both the city and county each taking you to court in two separate court cases this year, should we expect you suing another city council member for slander?"
It never happened. I never sued anybody. I responded to a city concern that I was violating the nuisance ordinance, and it went all the way up to Judge Miles Lord. And he decided in my favor, and the city had to pay a settlement, and they had to pay, make a public apology. I sued nobody. It was not my choice. It was a reaction to what the city had done.
Okay, thank you.
Pure and simple.
I don't know anything of the situation, so I just say, uh-
But, you know, that kind of rumbling in the background, and there are people that, you know, deal in rumors, deal in innuendo.
Fake news.
It's fake news. There you go. Yeah, but indeed, that is fake news, because I sued nobody.
All right, thank you. Uh, this message is from Kurt. And it's interesting. It's an interesting question. Kurt's question is, "Every housing addition has an ordinance. What will you do to keep the neighborhood ordinances in place?" This question is open to everyone. Some homeowner, homeowners have businesses running from them. They have trailers sitting in their yards. They have multiple cars parked along their garages. They have campers parked behind their homes, fish boats parked under their decks, pontoons in their side yards, et cetera. What will you do to help keep Maple Lake neighborhoods clean? Sounds to me like Kurt has a problem with some of his neighbors. Brian?
Those people own their own property. It's their property, unless they're pouring over to other people's property. That's their right. I don't know what the city ordinance is. I have no idea. I've been in the town two years. Nobody handed me a book. So I would imagine the only way that somebody's in violation is if they report it to somebody and is then ticketed for a violation. But I, I think that Kurt should mind his own house.
Good point. Wayne, what's your, what's your thought on this?
All the ordinances are right on the website if you wanna look them up, but, uh, you know, if it complies with the ordinances, you got a hard time dealing with it. You know, you're just not gonna go out there and be able to say, "You gotta move this, you gotta move that," if it complies.
John?
That brings me back to the need to deal with the nuisance ordinance. I don't know how many people are aware, but the ordinance, the way it reads, and I don't think it's ever been changed, even though I really pushed for change, is that you're allowed two licensed operable vehicles on your residential property per licensed driver. It has nothing to do with what you have for off-street parking availability. So in other words, when I'm married and I have two sons that are, all four of us licensed drivers, I could have had eight vehicles at my house. Across, and I have off-street parking for eight vehicles. You go across the street, they have off-street parking for two vehicles. So a man and, and his wife, and their two kids, if they live in that house, they can have eight vehicles, but they only have room to park two, because that's all the off-street parking they have. So that's the kind of thing that needs to be addressed. We need to recodefy the ordinances, simplify them, make them make sense. Do you have ordinances that, that deal with helping people that are actually being harmed? Not whose sensibilities are being offended.
Anyone else? With that being said, Todd, um, because of the folks up here, you've been on the city council for the past two years. Um, it's my understanding that a couple weeks ago, you did your annual city tour. And on a scale, the one to 10, one being really bad, 10 being, you know, pristine and perfect, what is the state of the city and people's property? What would you, would you rate it on a scale of one to 10?
Seven.
Seven?
Before you go, I have another question. Let's finish there, just one more, you know.
Well, thi- this one is, uh, and, you know, John Rivers wrote in. And John, I think you've addressed it, but I'm going to ask. Uh, many people are asking, "How can a person that is in violation of many city ordinances and refuse to comply with the cost and, you know, cost taxpayers' money and his, you know, he's saying thousands of dollars, how can you be allowed to, to run for city council?" Now?
I guess it's a free country.
It's America.
And certainly, I've paid thousands of dollars to, you know, in the past. It's been put on my taxes. And yes, taxpayers, you know, what I don't end up paying, they end up paying. We need to prosecute ordinance violators that are harming people, not ordinance violators that are, you know, offending public sensibility. If you have too many vehicles or you, you know, I, I guess, to simplify it, we need to take a look at what needs to be done and then do it appropriately. You know, grain dust is a bigger issue than how many items you have in your front yard.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna argue or, you know, that point with you, but what I will say is when, uh, when the condition of some people's property, getting back to the question that, that Kurt called in, when the condition of some people's property now starts to decrease the value of your property, then it becomes a little bit of an issue. That's all I'm gonna say, and I don't expect anyone to address that. Another question, Deb?
Yes. You, you kinda just hit on a mic, so. Going back to the ordinances, I, I can't imagine that every city out there doesn't have them. I don't think they're gonna let their residents run willy-nilly and pile up stuff on everybody's yards. There are ordinances there for a reason, and it's to protect people's property value, as Mike said. So, yes, if, if they're in compliance, Wayne, we don't do anything. If they're not in compliance, they're there for a reason. They're there to keep our property values up, which we pay taxes in this community to keep our values up. If I live next to somebody who has end-on-end of stuff, do you know what that's doing to the property value of my house? Who's gonna wanna buy it? Who's gonna wanna live there? I don't care if it's five boats sitting there or loaded with everything else. It's gonna take the right buyer, and it's gonna decrease my property value. So as a city, we need to be on top of that to protect people's property values. My other question to you, John.
Can, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Uh, the, the decrease in property values, you know, after all is said and done, I think it's interesting to check the tax records and see what the property value is. Has it been decreasing? You know, it, it's a red herring to say that, "Oh, yeah, my sensibilities are being offended because my neighbor has all this stuff." In the first place, my neighbors have never complained, you know. It's Mr. Rivers or somebody like that who has approached other people to pay for their campaign.
I'm, I'm, John, I'm gonna stop you right there, 'cause he has not paid for anybody's campaign, and you know what? If he has, or if I have, or Mike Messina has, candidates get donations all the time to run their campaign.
Sure they do.
All over. It's all over the country. You think Trump's running on his own? You think Biden is running on his own? Do you think Marion O'Neal is running on her own? Absolutely not.
What's the agenda? You know, what is-
What's the agenda for what? Do you think when Sean Deringer ran for sheriff, he ran that all on his own? Absolutely not. He had a lot of people donating, and so does every politician in this country. So I'm gonna stop you right there, because Wayne's campaign was not paid for by anybody.
But he was approached.
My other question to you.
But he was approached.
My other question to you, John. Two, uh, 2016, you became, you came before the council. Our old city attorney was here. And of course, we were dealing with the museum. At that point, she posed the question to you. You've, you've bragged up your museum on your flyers all around town. She asked you, "John, when are you gonna open your museum?"
And I don't have a crystal ball.
You said, you said June of 2018. We are now October of 20. Them were the words.
I said June of 2018?
Absolutely. And we can go back on record. We'll find it.
I'd like to see the record.
Because that's what was said. And here we are, June of 20. And that's all I've got to say. I'm done.
I think, Deb, you have to understand, since that time, I've had a big expense in terms of the roof and, and other issues that have come up that were not in my crystal ball.
Any other questions? If not, I wanna take this time to thank all of the candidates. Thank you very much, and I really mean that. I wanna thank the messenger for hosting this. Thank City Hall for opening their doors. And I wanna wish everyone a good night and encourage everyone to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.